I would like to leave you this reply of the United States of America and to a republic which spans one nation, under God, in the visible of liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Schaefer, will you please take attendance?
President Delgado.
Here.
Secretary Steppich. Vice President Braysonton.
Here.
Treasurer Guthrie. Trustee Donnelly.
Amazonas, wait.
Justin Bailey.
Here.
Trustee Schaefer, here.
Thank you. Just want to make a mention, Secretary Conceiving is marking us.
Yes.
Absolutely. Thank you. No motion required for that. Okay, any changes to the board agenda?
None.
Thank you. Consent, sorry, item three, consent agenda, meeting minutes of September 12th, 2017. Braysonton.
Will your proof of consent agenda is presented?
Support, support Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed, motion carries. Okay. Prearranged request to address the board. Steve Divitt.
Well, hi, and welcome to Leonard. Hope you enjoyed your drive out here. We had a real hot week of weather, but our student staff has done a real fantastic job. Keeping the kids cool and hydrated. We have the highest woman out here this year that has since I've been here. I believe we've grown over the past three years, especially this past year. So it's been real nice watching a lot of your families coming into the school and the area. Today what we're going to do is we have our ID reorganization visit coming up October 5th and 6th. And we have been reflecting on our practices and things that we kind of take for granted now, for the showing grain in what we do. And when you have to actually reflect on the things that you do, you make at the ID. First, you're a little nervous about it, then you start looking at it and say, well, we do so much of this stuff all the time without even thinking about it. And we have our ID coordinator Christine Vince here today. She's got, she wants to share a little bit with you about the ID office and reorganization visit. And then also kind of show you some of the things that went on in the week that really make us who we are in the lens by you.
Thank you. I'm Christine Vince.
Hang on one second, sorry. John, do you need the microphone? Or can you pick up that sound from there?
I wish you had a hand mic, but I don't think we've got one here.
Okay. If you could do your best, your outside voice.
I'll use my outside voice. I'm Christine Vince. I am the ID coordinator at Lakeville and at Leonard Elementary. And as Paul said, we are nearing the end of our self-study process. And self-study is a time for us to reflect and sort of think about and consider how we've grown our ID programs and make plans for the future, how we can improve our practices and improve our schools. So this has been going on for a couple of years. We are now at the point when the visit actually takes place. And ID will be sending members of the ID community to come and visit our schools to make observations, sit in our classrooms, and conduct interviews with our whole school community, which includes you. So I am here tonight first to invite you to those interviews. Understanding, of course, that we all do the schedules and so you do what you can. But what I have put on here, you're each going to get one of these flyers. Can I see these to you Nancy? Pass them down. Oopsie. And you might make sure you only get, you only need the first page. It's typed on two. I put all three schools on there. Leonard is having their visit next week. And then Lakeville and Clear Lake are having theirs on the 16th and 17th. I put on there the dates for the visits, the dates and times of the interviews that would involve board members and administrators. And then I also put my email information and Stephanie Meeley's email information. So if you could please RSVP, let us know if you can make it. That would be great. We would be seeing you there. So that being said, as I said, this part of the self-study is a great reflection process. And we, it gives us time to sort of think about what are we doing that we could be doing better? And then what are we also doing that we take for granted every day, like Paul mentioned, that really makes us shine? So what I'd like to share with you tonight is a sort of digital portfolio of where we're at in our progress at Leonard Elementary and spotlight an aspect of Leonard Elementary that makes Leonard extremely unique. Can you hear this? Oh, it's fine. Leonard learners communicate. First graders celebrate their reading. They congratulate the whole community by having a reading grade. You're sharing everyone. College of the library.
How would you describe an ID learner at Leonard Elementary?
I would describe them as knowledgeable, open-minded, caring, and inquiry.
And why did you think those were the attributes?
I picked those ones because knowledgeable, because we always learn everything. We started from preschool, preschool until fifth grade. And I picked open-minded because we're all open-minded to each other's ideas. And I picked inquiry because we all ask questions sometimes because nobody's perfect. And then I picked caring because everybody's caring toward another.
Leonard learners speak.
I describe an ID learner by it's a student who works about the whole world and what's around them instead of just what's in Leonard, Oxford, wherever you are in that time of that state. Because if you got to learn about the whole world, everything mattered.
Well, I really, really like learning math. And I really, really like thinking in my head. And then I like write down on the paper.
Leonard learners inquire about the world. So in kindergarten, that might look like a shared writing of questions they might have about something in the science lab. Here, they're learning about forces and motion by making ramps. And they're trying to make their cars and their balls go at different speeds. Or they might do a KWL where they recognize the questions and then they add to it as they grow their understanding. Leonard learners create. In our class, they work with all forms of media. Or they innovate on their own. This is the binoculars that the kindergarten are made with their fifth-grade reading buddy. Leonard learners are independent. In the second grade classrooms right now, they're offering alternative seating. So the kids have to make a choice about what kind of seating they would like to have for the day and why that is good for that. Leonard learners collaborate. Here, they're working on, it was a word study group in second grade. Here, they're taking part in a math lesson. Fifth graders are talking about what it needs to be peaceful on International Peace Day. Second graders are doing a science experiment. Leonard learners communicate on this video.
Buenos dias amigos. Good morning, my friend. Buenos dias amigos.
Good afternoon, my friend.
Buenos dias amigos.
Uh-oh.
My friend. Oh, you can't. Let me do it.
Leonard learners are peaceful. In honor of the International Day of Peace, students watch the video where they were asked, what does it mean to be peaceful in your community? And some students often suggested, we may be helpful, safe. We can help clean the earth. Leonard learners reflect.
Why is it important to reflect?
So we can't just remember what we've learned and not just like the next day we're like, what did you learn yesterday? So like it's like a reminder that we like have learned this and talked about this.
And finally, Leonard learners reflect.
You forgot. Leonard? You've forgotten who you are. No, you've forgotten me.
I'm glad.
Look at that. Go take a quick photo of that.
I'm hungry, man. I'm hungry to be.
Remember who you are. My son is a warrior king.
Ella, eh, de la, ella, eh, de la, ella, eh, de la, ella. He is a king. Ella, eh, de la, ella, he is a king. Ella, eh, de la, ella. He's a warrior. Ella, eh, de la, ella. He is a king. Ella, eh, de la, ella. He's a warrior. Ella, eh, de la, eh, he's a warrior. Ella, eh, de la, eh, he's a warrior. Ella, eh, de la, eh, he's a warrior.
So this is where we're at. As I said, that this also features a spotlight to something that makes Leonard unique. And that was that last little clip. That is the Leonard Theater Club, which is an amazing aspect of Leonard Elementary. And to speak more on behalf of the Leonard Theater Club, I would like to introduce Mrs. Lauren Lucassio. She is the Leonard parent who volunteers and runs that amazing work.
Hi, everybody. I'm a parent of a second grader here at Leonard. We came to Leonard when my son was in kindergarten during the 2015, 2016 school year. And it was at the talent show at the end of that year where I kind of came up with the idea for the theater club. It was kind of your typical talent show as far as the act. It was nothing that outrageous. But I was absolutely blown away by so many kids in one school having so much confidence and courage. And then witnessing their peers be so supportive and respectful of them when they got up there and did that. So it really just made sense to have something like a Leonard Theater Club Leonard. Leonard teaches kids to think independently and outside the box and to take action with those ideas. They encourage and promote learning in fun and creative ways and teach kids to be risk takers. And they do this by example. I don't know that any other school would have had a principal that was as supportive and encouraging or staff that would have been as welcoming or excited about an idea as big as having the Leonard Theater Club here. And we had 33 kids our initial year, so it was, it was brand new. I had never done anything like that. I don't believe that it's done in any other elementary school in the district. So it could have easily been, you know, eh, maybe something in the future. But everybody really jumped right in and got on board with our idea. From September to May, we met at least once a week. We had kids ranging from first grade to fifth grade. And we would run lines and learn some of the songs, design and create sets and crafts, and rehearse our show. Most of the kids had never been involved in a production of this size. Many of the kids were a little nervous about doing just that. Several of the kids were still learning to read. And surprisingly enough, none of the kids were familiar with the African language of Zulu, which three of our songs were done in. So we expected a lot of these kids. And I'd have to say they exceeded every single one of our expectations. Our final performance was incredible, not only did we sell more tickets than we ever thought that we would, but we had such an amazing response from the school and from the community. The kids were so proud of themselves. And it was, it was a great experience. And while we have a lot of talented kids here at Leonard, I would not deny that. But I don't think it's necessarily different from any other elementary school in that aspect. I think that at any school that you go to, you're going to find a ton of talented kids with unlimited amount of potential. But I don't think that you will find a school that draws out and discovers that talent, encourages and nurtures that talent, and provides as many ways for kids to share that talent with others, quite like what we've done. We were able to succeed because the students at Leonard have been given the tools to do just that. They're eager to theater to learn because they've been shown that learning can be fun. Their school, a lot of them have the theater club where they have equal access all year long. They're problem solvers. They've been taught how to communicate effectively with one another because that's how problems get solved. And I witnessed that every day in theater club. We had different kids with different learning styles, different capabilities, different backgrounds, different personalities, different ages. But they've been taught patience and compassion, so they really have the ability to work through those conflicts in a constructive and respectful way. The kids didn't have to solely rely on my and my co-directors' encouragement because the kids at Leonard really take it upon themselves to support and motivate each other. The students who taught leadership skills were more importantly. I found that they've been taught to lead with kindness and with an open mind. As the kids advance in grade levels here, they of course advance in maturity, but it was surprising to me how they kind of take on this leadership role with the younger kids and take responsibility for them. They look out for them, but they never looked down upon them. They, we had a great time at theater club. I'm so fortunate to have been able to do this at the school. It was one of the most rewarding experiences of my life. And I'm so thankful to the staff at Leonard for their dedication to teaching our students not only to be great students, but to be great people. This year, we have 44 kids appearing on stage and about half a dozen or so more than underneath behind the scenes helping us. So we're kind of going to be another amazing year. We're performing the Wizard of Oz on February 10th at Oxford High School. And we have ticket vouchers for all of you. We love to have you come out. And you can see firsthand how you really can get a better representative of the Oxford School District than Leonard Elementary.
Thank you. Next, to the rest, we thank you for your time and we hope to see you when we see you next at one of these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Before we move on, I just want to make a quick comment. I appreciate the information because I know typically we get going and you guys typically always leave. So I wanted to just say this before you, before you leave. We've been down the ID path for quite a number of years now and look forward to the recertification out here. So anything that we can do, we'll kind of talk amongst ourselves, see how we can support, making sure, because it is really important for the ID group to see board members at these. So I want everybody to make sure that you give me your schedules and we can coordinate so that everybody's here on this, so we can coordinate at least one or two board members on these one of these. But in addition, I also wanted to say thank you for the theater club that you put together. I mean, it's very unique in our district that we have parents really jump in and understand that we're preparing students in all aspects, not just academics, but the arts and athletics. And sometimes, a lot of times, we find that that's what really dials the student in to wanting to be at school with an extracurricular activity. So thank you for your time and you put in and all the rest. So I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Moving on. Board of Education Matters. Oh, we have, I'm sorry. We have two motions. Hang on one second. I grabbed the wrong. I printed off this one before. So we have two motions on here and it's regarding the dates of our upcoming meetings. We have a couple of scheduling issues that came up. And we're going to have Trustee Schaefer make a couple of motions. There's time period to discuss those also.
Yeah, so board can do this a couple of different ways. The first one is that we need to reschedule the November 7th meeting based on your discussion at our last meeting. And so before we make a motion, I guess we can do it two ways. Either one, we can discuss what kind of date that you want to move that to. Or we can put a date in the motion and then you can discuss it as a part of that motion. Probably I would recommend that we move the meeting from Tuesday, November 7th to Wednesday, November 8th. That way it'll be after the election and the board may have more to discuss or know where we stand based upon those election results. But again, that's.
Let's go ahead and read the motion with the 8th in there. And then we'll vote on it and we'll go from there.
Move to reschedule the November 7th, 2017 Board of Education meeting to Wednesday, November 8th, 2017, 6:30.
Support. Support. Mr. Bailey? All in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Okay, we have another one.
Move to cancel the March 27th, 2018 and June 19th, 2018 Board of Education meetings.
Support. Support Dr. Braysonton. Discussion. I will bring up for those of you that are questioning why we're moving those. Those are a third meeting in that month, in those months, and they reflect superintendent evaluation, quarterly evaluations. I talked with Superintendent Throne and he and I best came up with the idea of tacking that on to one of our already scheduled meetings in the favor of saving time and money for having everybody here an extra day, so.
Can you repeat those dates again? March 28th? March 20th and June 19th?
March 27th, June 19th.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, curriculum and instruction. Mr. Weaver.
I'm just wondering if you want to take a look. For some reason, I thought it was March 20th, Tim. Because March 27th, we're adding an extra day. So I believe we wanted to cancel the March 20th, which is our extra board meeting that month. The March 20th is going to be the head of the board office.
20th is the workshop, extra meeting.
That is correct, but we had the 27th because of some other activities that week. So we were just going to have our two meetings, the 13th and the 20th, not the 27th.
So there's a conflict of other activities on the 20th as well?
Yes.
That's. Right.
No, the 20th would remain. So the 13th and 20th would remain. 27th.
Is the one that we're canceling.
Is the one that we were canceling that's seven weeks before spring break. We had some other activities. And so.
So we are going to keep the 20th and we've canceled the 27th.
Correct. Again, I mean, that's. Yeah, that's just what you're asking.
I think what Joyce was saying is that at 20th was the other.
Correct.
The superintendent was supposed to report.
Absolutely correct. Maybe I'll say it this way, just that month, because of that, that scheduling, it was better to keep the two days of the 13th and 20th versus the 13th and 27th. So again, it's worth it, so.
Dr. Braysonton.
Would it be okay if we met at DA on the 20th? That one we canceled out out there, we have to go to 27th.
Yes, yes, that's exactly what we're.
So we could do that. I just want to skip out on.
Yep, so. So we need to update the calendar to reflect, instead of being at the Board of Education Office on the 20th, it will be at DA on the 20th. Okay. And then we need, and then we need to make sure that DA is aware of that change as well.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry for the confusion, folks.
So the quarterly, quarterly review that will be at the 20th.
Set down at the end of the 20th meeting. Okay. Okay. You good? All right. Item six, curriculum and instruction. Mr. Weaver.
All right. We're going to, I'm going to present on student growth, some of the changes that we've made this year, also some of the changes we've made to teacher evaluation this year, just to kind of keep you updated on what we're doing and trying to improve and trying to move students even along. We're really happy with this year's process. And so we're going to go ahead, up here is a quote. Really don't know who, is it that J.C. Penney, the person that started the stores? And this is not, I think a little bit from what the administrators put together as far as their presentation. But I think this quote, I liked it. I was going to go find a different one, but then I liked it and I decided it kind of summed it all up. Growth is never my weird change and it's a result of forces working together. And I really think this quote, whoever found it, needs to be complimented because I think it really sums up our student growth process this year. I will apologize, I had a couple of handouts back in my office. I had forgotten them earlier. I thought I'd be able to stop back by, but I just, over three hours coming back to Van Arden today, so I apologize. Feel like you're cutting out, don't you? But we're going to have to live with it. Evaluation for teachers is 75% is their classroom observation from the principals. And 25% is their deliberate growth plan with their SLOs. And it will be the average of SLO1 and SLO2. We'll go a little bit into that in just a minute. In a year from now, it's going to go at 60% for the classroom evaluation part. That's where the principal, once again, comes in, evaluates, sees them. You know, we have pretty stringent guidelines as to how many times everybody gets a formal. New tenure teachers or non-tenure teachers get a couple of formals. And then everybody gets at least one informal or two marking formals. And then non-tenure get quite a few informals as well, too. So it's quite an evaluation process, quite a growth process. So what is a SLO? A SLO is a student learning objective. It is a detailed, measurable growth involved by educators in collaboration with their evaluator. That's basically it. It's a pre and post test is what we look at. Teacher sets up targets, tries to give the screen, teaches the kids, does the, teaches the learning cycle, formative assessment, uses different strategies, teaching techniques, sees where the kids are, keeps moving them along, gets to the end of teaching the content and then reassesses at that point and then prepares to see the growth. And therefore you can then see the impact of destruction at that point and what happened with the child. That's kind of the basic overview of the SLO. So in reflecting that what went well last year, it really was a bucket. So in reflecting that went well last year, it really was about the process last year. We didn't focus on data because we didn't want the teachers worried about it. Also, we weren't sure exactly how all this would come together. So in order to make sure of how things work and not punish the teacher for our learning process, we went through, took the data piece out of it, still did all of that piece, but didn't count in the evaluation. It was more about participating and learning the process. Along with the buildings, found it better to view it as a group as they went through so that everybody built that common understanding. And they basically did it around reading. Elementary did it around math and they worked all together on it. And they basically shared strategies. And that's the main thing that this is all about, has to go forward. What else worked well was we worked on it all year. And with slow and steady, the, like we said, the process was collaborative. All teachers and administrators participated last year. The growth scores were determined by the participation. And then basically what else went well with them was it really helped to get that basic foundation of what an SLO was. It helped us understand what changes we need to make as we move forward. So... What we look at changing is, these are just general areas. You can read them, I'm not gonna read them to you. And I gave you a handout in your or packet as well, too. That's one of the handouts that I forgot. I can show it to you in just a second. Here is the handout, you can see that. We changed the focus, the actual evaluation process with them. What tool we use, we still use Marzano, but we actually changed the form. It's a lot more succinct, a lot better. We also changed the pre and post assessment formula. We had a formula that we used that we thought was a little too stringent and didn't encourage teachers to try different practices. So we changed that formula so that it was less punishing if your SLO didn't work because it's really about collaboration and trying different instructional techniques. And as we all know, when we try something for the first time, it doesn't always work. So we wanted it to be about teacher growth. And that's the main thing. Even though it is student growth, what you need to know about the SLO, it is about professional practice growth, plain and simple. It really, when you boil it down to it, it is not about the student growth that occurs. It is about the teachers changing their practices and then taking those practices, those changes in practice and applying them in all of their classes in other ways in their context. It is not about necessarily the student improving specifically on that. That is kind of a side benefit that occurs as you go through the student's learning objective. The main thing, though, is that those teachers are reflecting on their practice, discussing, reading articles, reading professional literature, attending work conferences and so forth, talking to their fellow teacher and trying to change their practices. We also exempted the ancillary staff from the actual SLO process as we came up with a second process, which you'll get a little overview of that tonight as well, too. Teachers are now doing two SLOs. Those SLOs vary in length depending on what level they're at for the most part. High school, because their kids change halfway through the year, their SLOs are semesters. They don't have the same kids second semester, so it's, you cannot do them in that situation. Elementary, middle school are, several of them are doing semester or unit length SLOs and some of them are doing year-long SLOs, SLOs. But they are doing two of them this year. And each one is tied to a different element or instructional practice in Marzano's Focus Evaluation. See what else? Changed the rubric, that's one thing I should talk about. Last year, our, our basic rubric focused a lot on exactly how much percentage growth could be shown. And we realized very quickly that is hard to really scientifically and fairly measure for the teachers. And also when we sat down and we included a couple of teachers in, which state law requires, into this process as we discussed it, we really wanted it to be a focus primary. We want this about teacher collaboration, teacher growth. How are they talking? How are we gonna help them do these conversations? And how are we gonna get them using more data in their practice? So we changed the rubric. And the biggest change that we did was instead of having, based on the percentages of what they actually showed to grow, we had a basic cutoff of 70%. If 70% of your kids meet the target, you started on the rubric at a 2. If you were under 70%, you started off the rubric at a 1. And then you went up through the rubric based on what you were trying to do and accomplish in your professional effort towards the SLO. Because once again, going back to, it's the student growth that occurs as a side benefit. What this is really about is teachers growing their practice and really using that database decision-making instructional practice in their classrooms. That is the part that we want to see grown and really trying to change that practice adoption. Are there any questions at this point?
Are there any discussions about maybe teachers who are highly effective in that have a slow or skimp evaluation year or something?
We have not at this point. We are so new in the process that I don't think we're ready for that. We may in the future do that. The only thing is, is that quite honestly, the standard of the process, they should be doing on their own, they should be actually doing it more. So I don't know that letting, I don't think letting them out, but removing that is really what we want to do, is we want to encourage the practice. Because all it really is, is assessing the kids, formative instruction, making sure you're doing that formative assessment, you're monitoring where you're at and then assessing it. If you really do that teaching and learning cycle, you're gonna show growth. And really, we just wanna keep, we wanna encourage that. So I don't know. It's really, the hard part is not so much letting on this all, it's really not on the teachers. It's on the, you know, Paul and Desha and Jan is sitting here. That's really the ones who would probably like to see that because they have a lot of footsteps in this process and checking things off and so forth. So I don't know, down the road, we may figure out a way to compromise and make it that way because the state's also required to be evaluating the teacher every year. And I know school districts are trying to figure out some ways to get around that now and doing that. And I agree, you need to lighten the load on the administrators on that end because you really can't go in and effectively work with, you know, at the high school, the teacher got, I think in the end about 30 teachers. That's a lot of professionals to try to juggle and try to help grow and coach. Coaching is not an intact, especially when you're dealing with a professional. It's not like you just go up to a professional and say, hey, I need you to see, I need to see this, I need to do that, boom, there you go. I mean, you really gotta have that dialogue and that process and then go back into that classroom and talk with the teacher again and work through the issues and the problems because they've been doing it, teaching it longer or in some cases more longer than our administrators have been administering. So, I mean, it's quite a process to get teachers to consider and change practices. And while we like to always quote best practice, there's a lot of best practice, instruction, strategy. So there's a lot of things that work. So you get into those philosophical decisions, but we're gonna, that's down the road as we develop.
I would love to investigate something that would just have teachers who are highly effective have just the student growth goal and then not necessarily involve in the formal observation or informal observation. Which is, you know, if we were teachers who were being highly effective overall and it would give the administrators more of a chance, I think, to work with those teachers?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Just something to consider, maybe?
Yeah, because that's part of the process. If we let them out of the student, if we have teachers not do the student growth, then if I teach biology with you, who am I working with at that point? So that's a great idea, maybe, is to then at that point, if down the road, we can look at the observation piece. I don't know what the state law mandates.
Yeah, they have a growth goal for sure, but something else to consider maybe is we look at a given take and our agreement with the OEA.
Yeah, so that's something we could look at as we go down and lighten the load on the administrators.
He's never said that.
I had no mercy. So is there any questions? Because I'm gonna move on from the student growth part of the evaluation and go into the actual focus teacher evaluation. This is the evaluation model. This is our old evaluation form that we use, basically. There was 41, I think you were still using it when you were with us. There was 41 elements and it was very cumbersome to use. There was too many elements and when you started marketing everything, it really watered down scores. It was hard to really manage. And so this year, or a year ago, they started rolling out a new Marzano teacher evaluation form called the Focus Evaluation Form. And it takes these 41 elements and condenses it down. And now, this form really doesn't necessarily show that in a good way, but it really does. There's only 23 elements on this. And underneath of each, there's much better information and guidance on what to look for, which I'll show you that in just a second. And it really helps the chief, the administrator who's evaluating plus the teacher, A, know what is, they help the teacher know what is important and what the evaluator is looking for. But it also gives the administrator help in somebody struggling with an area. You can now, you just go look into the form and you can work with them on, hey, this strategy really works here. Let's work and you can go do some further research with that teacher and help develop that strategy. So this is, I'm really excited about this part. Matter of fact, excited enough that I was like, man, I wish I could really be back at the principal role. That hits me every once in a while when the state keeps changing things too as well, so. Over here on this side, and I don't know how well you can see this, is an example of an element. And I apologize again for leaving those forms and like, I can blast that. You guys all have basically laptops, so it's easier accessing them. So of course, we don't have electronics. And we have one form that you can share. You have one form that you can share, so you can look at. But under those elements, there are specific things that you can look for for the teachers to be doing and the students to be doing. And it really gives you specifics. If you remember back to the old form, Dr. Brazington, there really was. There was general statements there, teachers, it should look like this kind of thing. Here, it's specifics that you can see and that you should be seeing in the classroom. And also as a teacher, you now know what exactly that element is and what that element consists of. So it is a level playing field and it is a great tool to have those discussions back and forth with the teacher. And you're able to go through and give them guidance. And they're also, they're able to see for themselves what guidance and where they need to go direct their whole professional practice, which is really what you want. Teachers improve, teachers improve when they reflect and work on things. They don't improve necessarily because Ken Weaver walks into their classroom one day and says, you need to improve. They need to see it themselves and most teachers are very much professionals and they want to do the best job they can. I've not met any teacher yet that has not had that focus. But when you do something one way and you think it works, you sometimes don't see the forest through the trees necessarily, or the students in this case, and all the day-to-day stuff that you have. And so it helps to have that teacher reflect on their own practice and they start realizing, hey, maybe there is a different way and I can do this and it may work better. And also, they're able to talk to their fellow peer and they're able to have those conversations because their peer might say, hey, this is working for me. I'm finding great success. Look at this data, boom, there you go. Now they've got their confirming answer and then they go from there. So some of this, you really don't need to know too as much. This was more for the teachers and that. So if they didn't have two deliberate growth goals, that they would be choosing goals will be tied to their SLOs so that their SLOs or their student growth is directly tied to their professional practice. Last year, there was many people who were kind of scratching their head, how does this all work together? How does this work? This year, because they're doing, and I forgot to mention this earlier, I'm surprised the principals didn't remind me, is that they're doing content SLOs. So now, if they are a math teacher, they're doing math. If they are a science teacher, they are doing science and so forth. And so now, now they pick the area, they pick their area that they see and they go look at their data. They pick the area that they can do as well in that they would like. And we're slowly changing that process to be away from the state data and really going towards our own local data because the state data is of such poor quality that it really can't be used for item analysis and so forth. And so you really need an item analysis to be able to do this process. So we're really working hard. The elementary is a little bit further ahead of the secondary because it's just the nature of the elementary and the way they collect data and so forth. But we're really working on it. So you look at your data, you pick your SLO, then you pick your element in the focus teacher evaluation. You grind them all up and away you go. And you do that twice throughout the year. So it's really epic for a lot of people that's really come together. And quite honestly, for all the changes that we made, I asked Mr. Gibbons today, has he heard anything from OEA members? And he said, I have not heard a peep. So if he hasn't heard a peep by now, that means things are going pretty well. And that's good also to the principals who have to roll this out. I get the easy job, I have to tell them, they have to take it to their teachers. Ancillary staff, we changed how they do, we gave them more options. We realized after last year that ancillary staff, because of the unique nature of their roles, they needed to have more options. Ancillary staff are counselors, speech and language, social workers, school psychologists, special agents that don't have direct kids in front of them, ID coordinators, stuff like that. So we put them all under this area so that they would have a couple of different pathways in which to move and show their student growth. I think they're a lot happier because they're freed up from the constraints of the SLO. And so I think they find that they have things that they can do because I think that's the biggest thing, is teachers wanted to do things that they thought would impact student achievement. And that was very awesome to see. And we took that constructive feedback and we worked with it. We figured out we had a separate side group that worked on this and like to thank them, they did a great job. We've got a few tweaks to do, but for the most part, I think we're up and going. And we changed a little bit of principal evaluation. So we did 55% is on their leadership practice, which that is kind of the same thing as what a teacher gets. I'm usually the one that does that part of it, visiting the buildings, working with them, that type of deal. There's several elements underneath there that they get marked on and observed and they add evidence or artifacts into a collection. And based on that, then they get marked. They also have a student growth score. Now, they don't have direct control over their student growth score, quite unlike a teacher because that's one of the reasons why we said it off the way we did it, was to really give teachers that control over their student growth and be able to make a difference. The principals and my student growth dip and so forth are all based off of what everybody else says. So the score that the building as a whole gets, that's a score for the principal. So that's 25% of their evaluation. 20% is their professional growth score, which they choose three goals and they work on it here. Two of them are professional, one of them's more like, could be a little bit more personal as far as, hey, I wanna improve my professional practice in this way. It still has to relate to school, can't be like, I probably put, hey, I still need to drop by that 40 pounds that they're talking about from the last year. So, well, I actually thought, but I had to see the hero there. All right. So that's the evaluation. Any questions?
I would like to point out as evidence, I know you can slide up there that showed the 41 elements going down to 23. It's actually much more significant than that. That's 41 out of elements and one domain out of four domains. So the new one is 23, it's got all four domains combined. Much more significant focus on, sort of like 60 some elements.
Yeah, it's actually, you're right, Paul, thanks. Yeah, it's actually 60 some elements. So it really does a nice job of honing in on that craft and that practice. And it really gives principals, I think, more than anything else, a real good chance to really get in there and work with the teachers for our more self-verses. You were so worried about when I was doing the evaluations, I was going with a laptop, my iPad and trying to type, just trying to mark things and everything else. This really helps solidify things and make it a lot more, as it says, focused. And really will help them to do a better job. No questions?
Mr. Chairman, it was towards the end where you covered principal evaluations. When you were going through the student teachers, one of the things that's really significant to me was the introspective way in which you're trying to improve yourself, right? And looking at the information, what you're seeing, what you're doing and almost being your own self-assessment, hence creating SLOs. Where is that in the principal world? Where's the principal self-evaluating? And I didn't see it in those three categories that they're put under the same type of philosophical change that maybe the teachers have.
Okay, they, there's mostly in their professional growth goals when they work on those. When they work on those goals, that's the areas in which they identify, self-identify with their own practice, as areas that they would like to work on. So they do that assessment, basically. We don't require the actual self-assessment that's in Marzano. It becomes a bit, what's the word I'm trying to search for? But they just do it functionally, because it's not a, I mean, they are extremely busy and so forth. It tends not to be as detailed because it's an electronic form. So, they, what we do though is, they set up their own goals, and then they have to get those approved by me. So then I also look back at what observations I've done, and they have those scores as well too. And they can look for areas in which they want to improve that score, and they identify them, and then they run it by me. I then approve the growth goal, or not approve, or say, can we do it this way, or do this. So that's how that works for them.
Is there anything like a peer evaluation, I mean, do teachers looking at their students? And they're saying to themselves, how am I doing? Do the faculty participate at all in evaluation of a principal? See what I'm saying? I mean, you've done a great job embedding into the culture of the teachers that they are looking at themselves, looking at their class, looking at the mechanism, and operationally making changes. But I guess the question is, I think that would be really challenging, but how would you do that as a principal? How would you do that same type of thing when they've got thirty-some staff people? That, they gotta look at the ways that they communicate, the way that they interact, the way that they deal with teachers. There's a whole bunch, just a teacher has to worry about how they communicate with kids.
Right, so, the way they, because there's a couple of questions that sound like in there. Right now, the teachers do not participate in the evaluation of a principal directly. Indirectly, they do, in the fact that I send many of their PEs, I show up at the school, I'm involved in the PE sessions, and I have opportunities to talk to teachers and so forth. So indirectly, they do participate in that way. The hard part is, is that in trying to get that, I've seen those types of setups before. And you get a mixed bag. You get some people that give you honest feedback, and you get some people that, because you're the evaluator, it's not quite kosher what they get back. So you gotta be careful how you set that up. Currently, right now, we have not included that aspect in the principal's evaluation. We do encourage the self-reflection, I mean, that's what elementary principals and secondary principals meetings are about. They meet with me at the midterm as well too. I've already met with them this year and discussed their evaluations from last year, and then also set up the process for this year. And so they have that part of a reflection, an area. Like I said, they also go through setting up their goals as well too. That's an area for reflection as well. And then also, at the end of the year, I meet with them and go over everything, and have that time to work with them. The role of the principal is very complex. You are expected to know everything, and basically, we joke about it sometimes, but in the end, you're responsible for everything. And that goes from heating and cooling to actual instructional practices in the building. They are responsible for everything under the sun in their building in the end. So, it's a lot to reflect on, and that's why we tried to narrow that focus with the Marzano instrument. And maybe what we need to do is show you back keys for them, and you might be able to see that, because it really does ask them, and it does the same thing that the teacher does. It gives them look force, it gives them ideas of artifacts that they would be collecting. And that's what I expect from them, is that when they sit down, and also, I forgot, they have a reflection log in the, as part of their professional growth practice, there is a reflection log in there, in which they answer seven or eight questions. They answer three questions or four questions on their student growth, and how that worked in their building, and how that process went. So they're reflecting in that aspect. They ask, what did they learn, what data did they show, what areas would they like to grow in? And then there's like six or seven or eight questions that are not yes or no answers. They're all gonna take a paragraph or so of reflection that they need to do over their own practice, and what did they learn throughout the year, and what areas they would like to improve. So we have that built in, and that process they go through with me, and I'm their big partner in that regard. And then they also are encouraged to work with their fellow principals.
And I'm proud of their reflection too, are those surveys, they do sometimes survey their staff, or maybe we just try to.
Yeah, I did forget, I do include that, the principals, that is part of the artifacts that they collect, I think. The survey results, we send those out for the community, the staff, and the students and that, depending on the age level of the kids. That as well is information for them, and also, I look at that as I'm evaluating and I improve some areas and look for that they might want to off of those surveys and so forth. So that also gives feedback that it's not directly, but indirectly gives the evaluation process as well. Does that answer your question?
From a principal's perspective on this, the way the slowest structure is, I can't have my teacher be successful in their slowest, because it needs my slowest. And Ken has to have a principal be successful in our slowest, and he'd be this evaluation or so. So it's almost like we're all on the same team, working to try to have, obviously, show growth and achievement. And what that does for, as a principal, like you said, there's so many hats that you wear. Sometimes you get caught up in management, and running a building, and running a school. This really forces you as a principal to really look at supporting your teacher as the instructional leader of the building, because you have to find ways to work with that teacher to help them be successful in getting their students to the bottom of the AEDP, as you know, that's a part of the growth story. And I can't say to the teachers, say, well, you know, I hope you do it, but if you don't, that's on you. Because now that's kind of on staff, and that's on me too. So it really does help you to reflect on what things you can do as an instructional leader in your school to help the best teachers, and the struggling teachers or whatever in between, to help all of them be successful. Again, it's a question that's up to you. So Ken, who supports us as principals, giving us the tools and the training and the support that we need. I don't want to sound like a selfish thing, but you've got to do it so he's, so he has to do it. So we all are on the same page, all the way down to the top, all the way down to the students, making sure that that is successful.
Thank you.
In addition, here, the principals have cohorts to be built within ourselves. So we have a K-12 sub-teams that we are doing evaluations within different buildings, just to practice the tool and to get better at the tool, and to kind of create a more cohesive evaluation system amongst us. So we're all in little sub-teams and sub-groups, and we bring that information back and, you know.
Okay, Ms. Frome. Thank you, yeah, I would just say it this way, and that indirectly, sort of like how Paul stated it, not this year, but next year, you know, forty percent of even my evaluation is gonna be, at the end of the day, directly related to how well are those principals helping our classroom teachers inform their instruction and grow student achievement? That's really what it boils down to. And I think for me, I've come full circle in that, precisely, this is probably one reason why I don't like the discussion about teachers getting bonuses with just their classroom results. At the end of the day, a lot of times, while I have my students maybe for one hour a day, the success of my students, when I have them in my class, may be dependent upon other teachers being successful in their classroom. And I think when you artificially introduce this competitiveness to where only limited amount of teachers can get a bonus or a reward, like what you would find in the private sector, I think you're gonna find when the teachers start to clam up, not share, and now all of a sudden, instead of us all working on the same team and trying to build our students up, and all having the results of that collective effort, you would find people who, okay, I'm only worried about my kids in my classroom, and forget about helping my fellow teacher next door. So, I just, I think this is a good point to just, I don't know, maybe just share my opinion on that, because I think in the next year or two, that's gonna become more and more political and more and more hot topic at the state level. I think that there's gonna be pressure to have school districts sort of artificially introduce this competitiveness. And that's been, it's one.
Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Weaver.
Okay, I got item B, when you're ready. Item B, hold on. Alright, we have a couple of curriculums that need to come through. These are, these did come through, they weren't quite ready with the other forty or so, or thirty-eight that we approved. Whatever it was. These were quite ready, these are classes we've been running for a long time. And they actually, I bet you, if you were to go back and be able to find the record, probably have been decided on at one time or discussed. But because of latest people accounting rules, we want to make sure that they have officially gotten your statement approved as board vet, who's on curriculum. Both, we've had a chance to go over that, the ones that Agro five, this class, it's a, the class that are, there are partnerships and they have the last component. And then it's an outside class, it's to give the bulk. And then also, we have the PAS class, which is the, it's an academic skills class for online learners. It's kind of geared up to either online learning and helps them develop the skills to be successful, which are very important to the online requirements.
Okay, we have two motions, Dr. Braisington.
Move to approve the Axber Virtual Academy Partnership elective courses, Agro Projects K-12 and PAS K-12, personalized academic success strategies as presented.
Support, support Ms. Schaefer. Discussion, all in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Now, quickly before you accept one, just so you understand the background, I don't know what was actually in the packets. This is the curriculum that was already approved, but due to the unique nature and just making sure with the people accounting rules, because some of these classes, we approved them K-12, but we do, we have extended some of them to K-5. Now, the curriculum is adapted and age-appropriate, you don't use the same exact, not all the courses do that, but to make sure that we're able to, we wanted to make sure that they were approved both elementary and secondary. And a lot of times, some of these curriculums, especially at the fifth grade level, you may use a class that could be K-12, but it's only used like at the fifth grade level. But since it's K-5, and we've set K-12, so we're coming back just to make sure of that, to make sure it's all already processed this year. We've had many changes in the curriculum, just wanted to make sure you have to track that through us.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Motion please, Ms. Schaefer.
Move to approve the Axber Virtual Academy Partnership general elective courses for elementary and secondary, as contained in the document K-12, OVA, 2017, 2018 partnership courses.
Support, support Dr. Braisington. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Item seven, finance and operations, Mr. Barnum.
Good evening, no items for me.
Thank you. Item eight, human resources, Ms. Lutowski.
Hi, well, I do not have a recommendation this evening, however, I will next meeting. We did add a fourth grade classroom at Lakedale due to high class sizes, or class sizes in that grade and high need. So, we've done some shifting around and added a special education opening, and I hired that person today. So I will have it on the next agenda, so.
Are those additions, Ms. Divitt, due to? Oh, I'm sorry. Is that just due to people moving in, or people choosing?
Yeah, particularly between late August and late, so we've had a big push there when school choices goes down.
This is not a product of school of choice, this is students who are just enrolling, they've been to the district.
And some of them really thought that those are regular ones, because this has been across the state.
Thank you. Item nine, student services.
Still growing students, as Chris said.
So we may have another addition higher.
I think we're slowing down.
I'm sure you guys work together, quite confident of that. Thank you. Item ten, board policy, we have a motion, second reading, policy. Ms. Schaefer.
Move to approve a second reading of policy number five-two-zero-zero, attendance, yes, percentage.
Support. Support, Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Unscheduled audience participation. Alright. Unscheduled audience participation, clarification, Mr. Frome. None? Okay, scheduled activities, we have all these posted on the website. Looks like there's quite a few, board education meetings, parent-teacher conferences, law choir event, parent-teacher conference, board meeting, so as long as we have them all posted, we're good. Alright, thank you. Final board comments, Ms. Donnelly.
Ken Weaver, thank you. Just thrilled to see an evaluation process that can be very cumbersome at times, done for the right reason, done the right way, so great job, great job.
Braisington.
I just enjoyed the presentation from our Christian Miss, just a great job with their program here. Thank you again, Paul, for hosting. I echo what Ms. Dabbly said, it's excellent work, and I know you closely work with me.
Yeah, clarifying, I, just to present her, this was a, there were a lot of people, and dandy administrators, a lot of people.
Well, your efforts just truly made an impact on classroom instruction, and I just want to say thanks for what you do.
Mr. Bailey.
I just want to echo the great presentation. I do quite a bit of this in my professional life, and I know how important that is to the team to get that feedback and know you care when you get that feedback, so I'd like to see that with the person.
Ms. Schaefer.
Good job, Ken. Also, Sam, I've been hearing a lot of good things about meetings that are happening on Wednesday nights, so I just wanted to remind everybody, six-thirty, you know, I've been steering people that way. A lot of people have a lot of questions, I think it's really great that you're taking the time to do that. So I just wanted to say things for you in the end, everybody else who attends those, and great job on the ID. I love Leonard, my daughter is a special ed kid, and so she started off here in the E C S E program. So it's such a great school, I thought Great Vietnam was really heartful. And I think she kind of tied Leonard up, brightened up three little backs, and she explained it in a great way. Great feeling out here, so I'll see what I can do to come out here. I'm already going to Clear Lake for one of these, but I'll try and see if I can help the guys out.
Very good. Yes, Ken, I think you look great.
Thank you.
You're good.
You too.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that, you know, we have a lot of things coming up that are super, super important to our district, and. are super, super important to our district, and when you really, Ken, when you make the presentation, you really see the effort, and it's, this has been going on, and I think in the past year or so, we've really focused our, our attention, um, towards student achievement. And it's, it's a focus of Tim's, on his review, and it's all the way down, and it, and I believe that when you look at that, and everybody's goal is student achievement. So, from the top, all the way down, everybody's tied together, just as Paul said. His success is measured in your success, is measured in Tim's success, and it's ultimately measured in the teacher's success, where it's most important, and where it's addressing the needs of our students. We've got a very, very good tool, I think it's something that we've worked really hard on in the last maybe two, three years, and I think it's really pointed in the right direction, so keep up the good work, keep the eye on the real important thing here, and it's the student growth, student achievement. So, I want to thank, and, and everybody, I know it's not just Ken, so we're just, we're just shooting the messenger here. And so, um, with that, yep?
I just wanted to mention, I know there was a whole dress code issue that happened over the last couple of weeks, and I just wanted to commend the district response, especially Matt Johnson, um, on that Frank Beckman podcast. I encourage the community members just to go to Frank Beckman's website, search for Matt Johnson, and this like five-minute, thirty-six-second podcast will come up, and just did an outstanding job showing that we care about kids, we enforce the dress code for the right reasons, and not making any kind of stand on any one issue. And I just thought the way that the district handled it, um, should be commended.
I was just gonna say that, but perfect. I'm glad somebody else had the same thought I did, because sometimes I think maybe I'm in a, in a vacuum with my own personal thoughts. Yeah, I know. I think a lot more times than not, Julie said, you say that. But, uh, I just want to say that, uh, it, it is very, very, um, difficult in today's day and age to do what you all do, and I, um, I just want to commend you all for, and I know it could happen in any building, so, um, I want to commend you all for the work that you all do, and it was handled, um, perfect, from top to bottom. So, Matt, thank you. Please to Tim, and you let Steve, his dad, at the high school, know. So, with that, it's yours.
Just a couple of things, Paul, thank you very much for hosting us out here in Leonard. Appreciate your hospitality and presentations tonight. Uh, I think the only other thing I'd say, since, um, we already talked about the dress code issue, is that, um, I, I want the board to know that I consistently remind our administrators that there's nothing more important that they do on a daily basis than get evaluation right. If you don't get the evaluation component right, a lot of things start to blow up, and get messy, and, and kids don't learn. And so, um, while we're not, uh, maybe perfect with everything that we do, I think we are getting better and better in our evaluation tool, and how we utilize it, and it's something that, um, that we all can compare to. So, uh, yeah.
All right. I have a motion for a closed session. Motion, please. Dr. Brazington.
Move to be in closed session, pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, section eight A, to consider a periodic personal evaluation of employees, if the name and person requests a close hearing.
Support. Support Ms. Schaefer. Discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.